What's that?
Our visual is live.
Okay.
Oh, this feels good.
I will attempt not to do anything crazy then.
We have different seats.
I've tried to see where everyone's supposed to be. Only because I have to run the meeting today. But I don't know.
My name is.
Oh, you're back next to me.
I like that. Yeah, I got used to that.
Yeah, totally.
Melissa. I've been used. Oh, no, it was like, it's a kid, he can be a little radical.
Have you met Dan?
He can be, but I thought it was actually helpful. Nate, but choose what you want.
Someone to be a hunger. No.
Are we good?
Yes.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Hastings-on-Hudson Board of Education for August 27, 2024. Due to our president's unavailability this evening, I will run the meeting in his absence. Is there a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussion of personnel matter, the appointment of the new assistant principal at Farragut Middle School?
So moved.
Second? No?
Second.
So moved?
So moved.
All in favor?
Yeah. All right. Everybody?
Yes.
All right.
We know what we're doing, we really do.
Rusty.
So now we're going to go across the hall.
All right.
All right.
Cameras are live and all, we'll just.
Oh, okay, that's all right, I was wondering.
We're going to be exiting the room and come back for the regular session.
Gotcha. I see.
That's for the next one, right? Oh, for this one?
Yeah.
This way.
I'm following Bill.
Follow me. Sorry, go ahead. We'll come back and start again.
For more kids, more for. This would be, this is more for children.
Thanks. The live streaming meeting, so it's easy to do this. Don?
Go on, I was on.
Yeah, he turned on the light.
Okay, so we're returning back to our regular meeting for August 27. And I think the first order of business that we'd like to proceed to is the item regarding the appointment of our new assistant principal. Are there any words you'd like to share with us first, ahead of time, Dr. Mercy?
Well, I'm excited to have had this opportunity to bring to the district an incredible talent. And I'm really pleased that Mr. Scott Winn has been such an advocate for our students, for the staff, for the community. Once we knew we had an opening at an awkward time, but one that made a lot of sense from Ms. Dawkins, and we respect greatly her service to the district, her, you know, moving on. But at that point, it was clear we had to move quickly. And it is important to know that in bringing the current individual forward, and we may ask Scott to say a few words publicly in a second. This gentleman competed with 140, 150 people. It then came down to five who were interviewed in person by a committee, a committee of parents, teachers, some administrators, all the rest. So it was an open, thorough process. And pleased to have put in writing both to you as a board and then to the community, because the board, back in July, formally voted to authorize that the superintendent had the authority to fully make an appointment and hire an individual over the summer period up through your board meeting, I think it's August, excuse me, October 9th or 8th. And that's because, and you've been doing that now since I arrived and other districts do this, because even in a small district, you'll have transitions in the summer, and it's often hard to get the board together. And to land the best people, you often during the summer, especially in August, and this is what this was, you have to be able to move quickly. And great people will not commit to you unless you can commit to them. And you have to do that in a way that assures them that they really have that position they wanted. And so while three years ago, the board started this process here, I can't speak to before that, this is a time where it really was very, very important. You will vote on some teachers tonight who'd been through the same process, but you only have six building administrators here, two at the middle school, and the assistant principal is a really important job. So I, going back to my first comment about a top-flight candidate, the process is such that I have the most immediate administrator, Mr. Scott Winn, run the process, I stay a layer away, and then I absorb and spend a good 90 minutes with Dan and with Scott. I like first names with the students, it won't be first name. But I got to spend 90 minutes working through a lot of questions, thoughts, as Dan later said, was a conversation. Also, Scott had thoroughly checked references, checked all the written material on Dan. And we have someone coming to us, and I've known, actually, District Two, where he's been his entire career, other than a wee bit at a few schools ahead of that, as he came into the profession. I've actually, in my Midwest days in Chicago, as we were looking for examples of excellence, we looked at District Two. And I think I surprised Dan by mentioning that we brought Tony Alvarado to Chicago to talk to a lot of Chicago educators about how to bring change and innovation for the whole student. This is 1980s. And so I've had a long, deep respect for District Two, and Dan is deep in District Two. He does not necessarily want to leave District Two, and that's a compliment to Hastings. He's very committed to strong, ongoing leadership in education, he's pursuing actively his doctorate at Fordham. We actually will give him much more flexibility here to pursue and achieve that doctorate. And that's something that you as a board and your predecessors have made sure we value. We want that intellectual rigor here while focusing on our students. So I've come to admire Dan. Again, the board's flexibility let us, we had a test run with Dan, if you will, on Friday with our leadership team. And it's now in the board report tonight, several people came to me and said, because Dan's one of several key new administrators joining us. And the veteran said, my goodness, where did you find this talent? And then, very importantly, Scott Winn said, I now have an incredibly important thought partner. So that's a lot of words, but I hope you see it's assuring both you as a board and on the community that's listening, that this atypical situation was grounded in the board's foresight in saying there are going to be times where we have to give the superintendent authority to make a decision to move. And ultimately, I'm the one held accountable here. And going forward, that's something certainly we can all talk about. But the good news here is we have landed a top-flight, student-centered, proven educator who very much is willing to give up a District Two run to come here and work with Scott Winn to help us get to even higher ground. So Scott, I don't know if you wanted to add anything or not?
No, got it.
All right, then, without further ado, I'm going to ask my colleagues if there's a motion to approve the appointment of Daniel Waldeck Jr. as our new assistant principal at Farragut Medical School.
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome to the district, Mr. Waldeck. We're so happy to have you. And I will say that we had a wonderful conversation in executive session, getting to hear a lot about your thoughts and your philosophy, and really a boatload of praise that you received from the folks who had the opportunity to meet with you. So we're very happy to have you join us, and we really think that you're a terrific candidate, and our children are going to really flourish with your presence here. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Those are really kind words, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, you're free to go. If you would like to leave, unless you want to hang out with us, too.
See you soon.
Nice to meet you guys.
Welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You have two other resolutions related.
Okay, so do you, you're going to get into the opening of the public meeting where it says any of the upcoming events, and there's a number of different things that are listed in each new school year.
Yeah, there's quite a lot here, and it's in the written record. I don't tend to read all through them because they're here quite clearly, other than, just to remind everybody, school does start on Tuesday, the 3rd, and early tomorrow morning, all of our faculty and staff will be back. We'll talk a little bit later in my report about that, but all the key announcements and calendar items are listed here.
So the two ensuing items in Item B and C under Number Three regard the resolution to appoint the supervisor of attendance for Farragut Middle School. That's Item 3B. And Item 3C is regarding the resolution to appoint the school dignity act coordinator for Farragut Middle School. I will say, just for a point of clarification from the public, that those are positions that are a part and parcel of the positions of the assistant principals at their respective schools. So I just wanted to clarify that before I make a motion for anybody to adopt the matter. If anybody has any questions about it that perhaps the superintendent can answer, or anyone else here around the table? Are there any questions from any colleagues? All right. So then, do I have a motion to approve Items 3B and 3C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I say aye. Aye. All right. Moving along, we have our report from the superintendent.
In the document that we posted this mid-afternoon today, it's been a busy run up to the start of the year for the board, much of what's in this report, you had seen in another form earlier, but I tried to chronologically list here key items leading up to the start of school on September 3rd. One thing I do flag here, because I don't need to reread things to you, is that working with Cara Tamar, our new communications associate, we are trying to think about a different way to do the superintendent's report. My predecessor Valerie had done a little more of a slide presentation featuring things. That's an option, that's what other superintendents do at the front end of a meeting, still to be as efficient, not to delay you getting into your work. But we are trying to think about doing this opening a little bit differently than the memo format that you see. We believe the memo format is tight, it links off to larger documents. There is communication I have with the board, often I then bring that into the public realm here, or other types of, try and make it every two weeks, a catchment, if you will, a summary of key things. So it, you know, not tonight necessarily, we'll try out something in two weeks, a little different version, maybe after that, you as a board could react to whether you like the kind of memo format that's here with the brief narratives, or what will bring you, which won't be a lot different, but maybe a little more dynamic than you've been seeing here.
Talking about the opening, excuse me.
I'm talking about the report that I do.
At the board meeting.
Yeah, this one here. So, and I don't tend to reread it. It's there, and it's in the public record, and I do know members of the public are definitely reading it closely. And so it's just thinking about what's best for you as a board, that's most important, because this is a meeting for you, and then just how to best communicate. And it's just fresh eyes, and Cara has looked and said there are other ways to think about this, some of it is maybe going back to something that had been done here before. But again, brevity and efficiency.
I remember.
Please, go ahead.
One point when, it's a combination, I think, of this and also of things that are coming up, but there would be a little bit of a slide, two minutes, I think, that long, but just some slides of things that had gone on in the district and.
Visuals.
Yeah, and I think that was helpful for board members, I think it was helpful for people watching, either in the audience or at home, just to get a feel for what's going on in the district and not assuming that people will just read. I mean, I think we all read, but I don't think other people necessarily do, and it's like the good stuff, and we need to have that, too, I think.
No, I agree that it adds color, and particularly for those folks who already feel like there's things embedded in documents that they then need to ferret to, ferret through, I think it's helpful to just have a visual that people can easily kind of glom onto.
I do, too. I mean, I think in the world where we're always receiving information, mixing it up will speak, will reach more people. You could even do a podcast. Now there's an AI podcast. You just type something, and then it turns into a podcast, and auditory listeners, you know, reaching all students and all parents.
Yeah, yeah.
Listen to the board meeting.
So there may be other comments, but you've done exactly what I hope, you're giving some feedback. I think what Melissa D., who's my right-hand arm and left-arm arm in my brain, is saying, yeah, that's what we talked about, Bill, earlier, you did that well, so now you got the feedback. So I think we'll take a shot working with Cara, it's something which will be somewhat familiar to those who've been here around for a while, but to make it dynamic, brief and short. We also do know that you have your two student BOE liaisons who will do an update, they're going to work hard to have it a K through 12 update, and so you'll have that sort of aspect. But there's, you know, there are things coming where I think the visuals briefly done, you know, can help. So, all right. Just one thing is that the board has been receiving a couple of enrollment updates. This is the first one that's out in the public, I just want that there before the opening of school. And the key thing is, if the view in Hastings is we're losing students, we are not, and that chart should make it clear that we are not. And as we move forward, talking about the bond and all the rest, and you as a board today went through your required walkthrough, and we'll give you many chances to walk the facilities if you'd like, so don't view it as just today. But I think you saw that we, particularly in this building, have some very overcrowded spaces. And one of the excitements of the leadership from Mr. Winn and now Don is, Don, Dan, my brain, Dan, that we have people who have fresh eyes on really what an optimal middle school space is to build on the strengths here. Similarly, you know, Andy Kleiman at the high school is now fully here, Tara Ware is on the way. Mr. Kleiman's very, Andy, very excited about that opportunity to think about facilities. But what I'm getting to is, can do some updates visually when you hear from me. So, all right. Any questions about the report or anything in there? Again, we gave you the rundown of everything that's going on, so we open up as smoothly as possible next week for our students. Final thing, sorry, final, final, we have a unique keynoteer tomorrow. Many districts at their opening convocation, and they have one, they bring in somebody national, international, sometimes they put up with their superintendent, which you've done here for three years, but the strong view is, let's have a student be our keynote. So Kai Dirksen will be the keynoteer tomorrow.
That's wonderful.
And it's going to be Kai's words. Kai and I talked on the phone yesterday, and Kai and I met today, and I said, Kai, you bring it. And what I know we're going to hear is a set of stories of Kai's experience here in Hastings, and with it, sort of a challenge to all of us, is going into Kai's senior year, not just for Kai, but for the students, what would Kai hope and the students hope to see? So a little phrase that came to me is, I listened to Kai today, and these are, you know, I did not edit or anything, I'm just listening, is to say, this is the power story from an individual, because it speaks to what the group needs. So if anyone has time to get here tomorrow, you know, between 8:30 and 9:30, Kai will go on about 9:15. And most districts do not have a student keynote speaker for the entire opening. So I'm actually excited to see what happens.
Does it start at 8:30 in the auditorium after?
8:15, it's sort of food, thank you, PTSA Septa, thank you for that host, and then we move into the auditorium. It's pretty prompt, because staff. At 8:30, and we'll end promptly at, actually at 9:30.
And his speech speaks to K through 12?
She.
Um, she, sorry.
They, they.
They.
Kai's.
Speech is K through 12.
Oh, yeah, Kai's experience, yes, very much.
And Kai has proven to be an exceptional student liaison for our BOE. I have to say, our meetings were really charged up last year in terms of.
Excellent.
A very thorough insight into and energy for what's happening in the school. So I'm sure that similarly, the crowd tomorrow will be electrified by their presence, so.
And if it goes well, perhaps, moving forward, there'll be more students, you know, middle school students presenting who they are to the middle school staff, elementary school students talking about, you know, what's popping in their culture, and it could be an exciting pivot.
Yeah, and that's a good one. Let me clarify, there's, I've been here long enough to say the following, there is a lot of student voice and engagement within the given day here. This is a very active place for student voice. What I'm saying, just to be very clear, is that at the convocation that launches your school year, the only time where your staff are all in one place. We're saying that the speaker for that group.
It's tremendous.
Will be a student. And that's going to be clear on what.
Right, yes.
So.
It's exciting.
And I think, and Melissa leads the professional learning community, the design superintendent's conference day, it's a complete misnomer to call it superintendent's conference day. It's really, it's the teacher's conference day, and they love the idea of a student voice. And a final thing here, just so you know, there's a little, then I'll be done. Because tomorrow, I'm only going to say the two words that matter to me right now, students enjoy. We have to stand for students enjoy this year, and then that's why it's so great that Kai will be kind of that voice.
Wonderful. All right, moving right along on the agenda, I believe that Dr. Samansky, you're up with a report from the assistant superintendent on curriculum.
So I will not speak long, other than to say, the summer was hopping here in Hastings, lots of summer curriculum work going on, lots of planning with the administrative team, lots of induction happening. So you'll see in our recent edition of Hastings Happenings, some additional flavor on the summer curriculum work coming up soon, some additional flavor on our new professionals orientation. We have a new cohort of about 21 new faculty and staff across a variety of different types of roles, and we've done a lot of getting to know you, those who are able to attend our new professionals orientation and different mini-sessions focused on not only getting people acclimated with Hastings and the Hastings culture, but also some very quick structural things to make sure everybody is up and running, like even some technical, how do I log into my computer so I can access my resources? So everything from that to professional learning, looking at the Danielson rubric, which is something that we use around professional practice, digging in around some relationship building pieces, so that was a whole lot of fun. And then this past Friday and Monday, we're dedicated to our annual leadership retreat. And similarly, we have a number of new professionals on our leadership team, so we focused on relationship building, logistical planning, coordinations, aspirations, and also participating in restorative practices work. So Duke Fisher joined us yesterday. So our morning was around both proactive and reactive approaches to restorative practice, and that was very, very powerful, very vulnerable, and very thoughtful. And then we headed off, thanks to the PTSA mini-grant to Boundless Adventures, so the administrators were chasing the treetops, doing obstacles, ziplining, screaming a lot, and helping each other through, because if you've never been stuck dangling in the middle of a zip line, you need your colleagues to get you through that experience. So it's a lot of fun, and, you know, and it was a day that was rigorous physically, emotionally, intellectually, and then, of course, Friday as well, lots of good work around developing a coherent team and starting that process along with our new professionals on the administrative team as well.
I just want to know if any of you went on the black diamond zip lines?
No, well, not me.
That was a very succinct answer, like that.
I think there may have been two at the end, but I am now curious to look into that. I'm pretty sure there were a couple of people at the end that went.
The photo record would have Andy Kleiman, Scott Winn, Jeanette Coker, and Mike at the very end, and I went back, kind of, I was the German, no, the St. Bernard of the event, kind of taking photos and making sure everybody was there. I have to say, it was a little nerve-wracking on the ground, we're looking up at some of this, I wasn't sure we'd have a team later. But you have, in those four, for sure, I think some were at that level.
I've been there with my kids.
Yeah, and I know Dr. Samansky very much wanted to be there and would have been, but from what I heard later. But, yeah, it was, thank you, PTSA.
Want to be supportive to our yellow line team, right?
Yes.
All good.
All learners.
Have fun, too. Very good.
That is terrific, wonderful. All right, Ms. Karabala?
Yeah, I will give my comments during the business section, as there's a number of items that we want to pull out this evening and highlight for you, so I guess when we move on to our next part of the meeting.
Well, we'll revisit with you once we get to the business section.
Yes, exactly.
So now, we're going to move along to the section for public comment, but we have no public present with us, so we're going to skip right over that section. And voila, we're at the business section. So your reprieve was not very long.
Yes, it was not. So the items, I mean, there, obviously, if there's any other questions on other items that are listed, we wanted to highlight tonight, and there are a few, I'll start just in order as they appear on the agenda. So Number Six and Seven, so this evening, Bill had mentioned that the board did their annual facilities walkthrough, and during that, of course, in addition to highlighting all the wonderful projects and work that was done by our fabulous facility staff, which pulled off each and every year, no matter what the circumstances may be, during that time, we also highlighted something that just about two weeks or so ago, we discovered a relatively hazardous condition within the building and needed to work quickly. It was also related to a later item in regards to our new architects in doing their engineering review of the building, and this was something that, again, may have just have happened within the last, we're not quite sure, time, but of course, we do do this type of analysis every few years or so, but there was a condition with our ceilings and concrete that became loose from above structure that posed a significant risk and actually an extremely dangerous condition. So we needed to act fast. Bill, actually, I was bringing my daughter to college, and Bill and Joe, working with the architects very quickly, we needed to secure an external partner because that needed to be removed. It was 12,000 pounds of cement in each classroom that was actually not secured and had separated from a structure, so that, those emergency contracts needed to be executed. Thankfully, there was a active bid for that type of work, and we would have allowed us legally to access a contractor to come in and perform that removal for us and ensure that, again, there's testing in terms of asbestos and all the rest, and environmental testing that also had to occur within this work being performed. So just wanted to highlight that I know the board was obviously part of their tour tonight, we discussed this, and I know it was something that we're grateful that not only was it addressed, and obviously it was done, and no one was harmed, and then also our classrooms, you wouldn't even know it had happened, because everything is back and ready to go for tomorrow. So again, we, but just that really is connected to as we begin, as we're entering into this upcoming year, which we know we're preparing or planning or hoping to bring a bond to the community in May. And you'll see under Item Number 19, and there's a memo that accompanies that, this, we've already had done an RFP, we already had awarded the contract for this type of work to land associates, but this, this here, after meeting with the district, and they've, so there are two components to the work, one of which was the building condition survey, which they've already been working on all summer, and that's where the ceiling situation was discovered. They're also, they were also, as part of their RFP, responding to a pre-bond proposal. So as they now have had an opportunity to meet with us, understand some of the different areas of focus we're looking on, understand, you know, of course, we did an RFP, but until you really come in the district and have the opportunity to speak and review some of the things that we were discussing in terms of fields and space and all the rest, and again, of course, as maintenance, they put together something that just kind of outlines their process, and then also gives us, and the reason it's on here for your approval is not so much we've already approved their fee structure, but I think it's important that you see a schedule that now, that has been kind of flushed out based upon their better understanding of looking at our, you know, our buildings and what it would require realistically to come and present in order to bring something to the public and have all the information we would need and be able to hold all the meetings we would need to do. So as you can see in this proposal, with some other things that they built in, such as environmental reviews and all the rest, we are now looking at, potentially, again, we want to give ourselves some flexibility, but a May vote, so that would be almost a year away from now, and that's really based upon their better understanding of some of the work. And again, until you really hear it, it's difficult to understand, you know, well, they could understand it, but have a better understanding of also things that the district is considering. So that is on there this evening for two things, for just to give the board also now, you know, you approve the schedule of hourly rates and engineering rates and all the rest, and it also gives us a sense of the amount of money that we'll have to spend in order to get that bond scoped together. Just, you know, it's a good planning document, but also, we're all in agree, it helps us to formalize an agreement to say, yes, this is a timeframe in which, you know, we expect you to complete this work for us. So that's why it is also on here, because a timeframe is, a timeline is something, you have to have an agreement upon that, you know, so that we're on the same page. So that I wanted to highlight, and then also, again, Number 20, development of the skate park. And then also, again, number 20, development of the skate park. This is something that's been under discussion with the school district for, I don't want to say the wrong amount of years, but definitely over five years, probably closer to six or seven. Just a brief history, not unlike other arrangements we currently have with the village, where either we use some of their facilities and they use some of ours for programming. And as an example currently, an example of that is the park that exists at Reynolds Field is school district property, and they own and operate and maintain that, you know, park for, for young students, right? Not young students, for younger children. So, to do the playground, right. So, but, you know, that, it's not something that would be of any use for us, right? That particular area. All other areas at Reynolds are owned, operated, maintained by the school district, basketball courts, tennis, and of course, the track and field. But of course, they are community, you know, community, for community use as well, especially like, say, the basketball, I think, is, is an example of something that is kind of, we both share a lot of that use. But that being said, this is something that has, they've been looking for a, the village had started to look for a piece of property that would be able to be developed for this purpose, for to have a skate park in town. And being that there's a certain amount of topography and space and, and different areas in which that would be more appropriate for it to be located, there was a time at which, for history, for people who kind of know the history, there was a small, not like a full skate park, but a couple ramps that were in a park on Walbert, and I believe that's just now, not, not any type of, just kind of like a place is set, or maybe there may be some things in there. But, but it was not something, I mean, there was, there was never a skate park in town, but there were, were some ramps. So that, that became a conversation very early on, village, village board of the recreation board, which some of the members may, are still on it, but some are not, no longer with them, community members who are interested in raising money for this effort and all the rest. So at that time, our school board with us, we looked at areas in which, you know, property that we would never use because it's not for us. So building a skate park, we're not going to build on rock, like we're not, that is not space in which would be usable, buildable property for us. So we started to look at areas of the Burke Estate. Initially, we looked at an area closer to the road, and I think there was some concerns from residents who live directly across from there in terms of, you know, they, there were some concerns about noise and all the rest, of that being a little bit too close. I think the village would have been happy with that location, but the compromise was to pull it up the road, have you, the roadway there at Burke? And as you can see with the attached map, if you can kind of orient yourself, it is the area that is up top, it's almost, if you're looking at the bathroom, it's to the left, it's like opposite of where the baseball field is, and it's kind of tucked back a bit in there. I think, you know, we've looked at the space for a very long time with them. It is a space that is usable for their, their needs. We feel comfortable with the commitment from the village that we, you know, any use of that park, that it will be, you know, cognizant of that it won't have a negative impact on our use of our, the Burke Estate. So that being said, it is just, it's like an agreement for them to use the space. There were, there have been, and there is some continuing talks about whether it be best for us to either deed them the property. These are just things that our attorneys have been involved with, both Linda Whitehead at the village's attorney and our Kenyon Bean attorney. So that is not representative in here. I think that we were happy to do it either way, meaning if, if we needed to cut out the piece of property and donate it to them, similar to the way they donated the Burke Estate to us, excuse me, Reynolds Field, was donated to the school district from the village at one point in time. So very similar to that, it's just a way to allow them to have space for a park that they don't currently have space to develop, other than to look to us, that is a space that we will not use. So that, this whole resolution relates to that. It's important that it gets done because in order for them to access grant money, and this is a thing I'll say about the, but it is a big thing, because I'm trying to give some history, I don't know if people here know the whole history of skate park, but they do have grant money that they're accessing from, and they do, they need this to be passed, and the village has done this, a same, a similar resolution as a commitment to building it and funding it and maintaining it and all the rest, in order to access grant money available to build these type of parks. And, and then there's money coming from the village, as well as the, whatever money that, I guess, group of parents have been fundraising for a number of years.
Yeah, and if I may, just conceptually, it's been a discussion now going back a number of years. So it's sort of been not fully in front of the board, but back to when Doug Sunheim was board president.
Yeah, I think even prior to that, yeah.
And prior to that. But it, but there was a sense of commitment from the district to partner and collaborate with the village on this. Obviously, it makes sense for us to partner and collaborate whenever we can, providing, you know, new recreational, healthy space. And it just was taken, these things take a little while, and this one has rightly so, just to find the right location, maximizing the best, and, you know, minimizing the concerns. But we would, we're ready to have this move ahead. I know the village leadership is anxious. We begin moving, there's a lot of legwork's gone into this.
Yeah, and I believe they have, I mean, I know they've raised over $100,000, so this has been a long term. And, and quite frankly, as far as, you know, the school district, we do have a lot of our, you know, obviously, it's our students who would be mostly like, you know, using the skate park, but even beyond that, we've had a informal skate park that is our parking lot, which actually, we're like, be happy to have them actually in a skate park. So, I mean, that, there is also a benefit for us because they like using some of the stairs and properties, so that's not ideal either. But that, again, this represents, I would say, as Bill mentioned, dates back, as I had said first, to a few previous boards, and, and the commitment was there from the district. But it hadn't been formalized because they hadn't solidified the location, so it's been kind of this thing that's been out there.
Maureen, so this is basically the, kind of gets the ball rolling for them to get grant money?
Yes.
And, and start construction? Do they have a sense of timing on the construction?
So I, I think it's really going to come down to the funding. So I know they, I've seen the design, and actually, I would love, it'll actually dress up the place a bit because the area now has been largely used for dumping, quite frankly. But I believe if they were, if they're able to, I think they need at least like $250,000 to break ground. So they have the design, they've, they've had architects, and they have a good sense of design. So I think it's really, once they have some funding in place, then they'll be able to give us a definitive schedule. So I think it's really going to depend on the ability to access some of these grant funds. I know the village, I, I know they, they were looking at, you know, phasing certain money in over a couple of years. So, I mean, my guess at this point is if they get the funding, they may see something built there in like the next two years. Like, that would be, or, you know, because as, as we know, here, they're similarly under, you know, they have to do bids, and they have to do different things in order to get the work completed. So, and, and even if they apply for this grant, I would imagine there'd be some time prior to their, you know, receiving those funds.
And this gives them the right to use of the park, and they cover the insurance and everything else?
Yes.
And the maintenance?
Yes.
It does indeed the property, right?
It does not. And honestly, we looked at it, you know, we, we did look at, we were flexible in doing it either way, quite frankly, meaning initially, it was a land use agreement or like an intermunicipal agreement, like an IMA, which we currently have, an I, an existing IMA that will then now be updated once, once this park is actually built, that will be then updated to reflect that, which, again, just really speaks to what the arrangements are, right? It, it solidifies this, and then also gives you, gives both parties opportunities to either change or, say, as an example, very early on, it's, you know, we looked at concerns, the baseball team as an example, they're concerned that during, say, if they have a varsity game or a contest and residual noise and, you know, pitching and all the rest. And we said, you know, we said that to the village, like, we're going to close the park or we're going to ask you to close. And they were like, of course, you know, I think, you know, you're talking about the 10 home games a year or so, if there needs to be, if it needs to be closed for a few hours, to ensure that there's no distraction from what's happening on our athletic fields, you know, that, that's like, is an example of something that then would be rolled into an IMA once it's fully there.
Got you. And, and community feedback was taken into consideration in the location, correct?
Yeah, so, so, I mean, yeah, so in terms of the initial location that was closer to the street, which in some ways would have, I guess, arguably for a park, been a better location just from an access standpoint, like it's immediately off of that sidewalk. But I, you know, I think that's why we started to kind of look at other possibilities. I think even the build there may have been easier, if I, if I recall that correctly, meaning for the state, for the village, it would have made, maybe even been a less expensive construction. So we did absolutely, like, the individuals, the neighbors who lived over there, that was something that, when that was voiced, that's when the village had said, can we now look? Can we look, can we push it up a bit? And, you know, I, I would imagine, I have not heard anything since that change has occurred. That was, a location change was a few years back, when, you know, we, we decided that we would be willing to kind of see if there was another location that, and they were able to build on it, so.
Got you. So like, in the future, for updates on this, this would go before the village board, correct?
Yes.
We wouldn't be like the funnel for updates or public comment, et cetera?
No, I mean, it is all the village, and I think at this point, other than us allowing the, the use of the property, it really is the village who's, you know, building and maintaining and deciding. Again, they, they've been, we have been partnering, and they've been, of course, respectful of the fact that it is on our property and giving us a really clear understanding of what the thinking is and how the entranceway from, meaning the, like a little pathway that leads to the entrance of the skate park or where the bowls are and all the rest. So we do have a good understanding of like how they're designing it, the landscaping and all the rest. So, and I think a lot of that also depends on the funding, and they may need to like, you know, tweak their plans. But I think what they were planning and how they were planning on the access, I, I think, you know, Joe and myself were out there, we, of course, looked at some trees that are not in danger of falling and are in, you know, what we consider a healthy condition, and they've, that was also consideration of not taking those trees down and, you know, things of that nature. So they've, that, that's also a part of the parameters we gave them in terms of space.
Okay. Could we get kind of periodic updates as they reach milestones?
Yes.
Could this group also kind of say, this is what we've come, this is the design, let's say, if there's input needed, just to sort of, since it's our land, right?
Yes, absolutely. And, and I think as they, they've showed us some kind of schematic designs, but similar to when we do schematic designs, I think although they have some borings and some understanding, that may need to shift a bit. But I think we were, we, we can definitely have those presented to the board, and then also you'll have like a good understanding of where, where in the property begins and all the rest. And as I said, even those other things, such as like our own athletes or our own programs, we've been listening and taking feedback and then speaking with the village in regards to that. And, you know, I, I feel comfortable because I think it is the village, and, and we've always worked well together, and I don't see there being any issue with, you know, tweaks or anything that we've suggested or said that would, we would need a bit of, you know, we wanted it to be either back or to the side a bit, and, and they've been respectful of those things. So, yes, but we will provide that too, as, as we receive those updates in terms of the construction and all the rest. Thank you.
This is incredibly exciting. One question about insurance, like, since it's school land, do we have any liability, given that it is a skate park?
Yes, so, so the insurance on the property, because at that point, it's through the IMA, they're operating that facility, similar to the way they insure the Reynolds Field part of that property. And if a child fell on that equipment, I mean, of course, we work with them together, and if there's an issue, we would either, if we felt it was of, when there's things, we, we also maintain and make sure that there's no safety concerns on it. So currently, the insurance would be carried by them, like anything else, I'm, I would imagine, like you could argue, well, when the skateboarders, I mean, it's true, the skateboarders are leaving the skate park and then either on your driveway or, you know, coming, walking onto your property or all the rest, I mean, of course, like, you know, but that, that could be said, like, you know, right now, anyone's skateboarding on our, any of our property. So I think, you know, the liability, and I think, at the time, and I can provide a little bit of a better answer for you, but the insurance, I know that we did research that at the time, and, and the insurance would be fully covered by the village, but then, and there was nothing like, as much as it is skateboarding, it's not something that is, puts it into like any type of category of like, you know what I mean? That would be, I mean, of course, they would have, have the, be correctly insured to whatever their broker would recommend or whoever provides them their insurance, but that would be fully under them. And then again, if there were somebody, I guess, that was either then riding their skateboard, although they're not supposed to, down the curb or whatever the case may be, like, and they fell, like, I guess that would technically fall under ours, but that, we have people get who are sometimes riding their sidewalks. So I think that, I think that's no different than what exists currently. And, and again, that, the concern around that, I think we feel, you know, we'll be okay. And that would be like an unauthorized use of it anyway, so.
Yeah, you'd want to put signage up, so you know.
Yeah, exactly. Right, exactly. And that's more a concern also for our property and, and also the safety of others that would be maintaining it. But again, I feel as though with the village and the commitment of the people around there, I think we're going to be really, you know, working hard to ensure that, you know, those things are, like signage is up, and we spoke a lot about signage in the beginning of the process, and, you know, monitoring it, of course, and being it's the village property, it would be the, not the police is responsible, but obviously falls under their jurisdiction of oversight as well. So I think they do a good job of that, even at places like Union Town, that as we know, a lot of the things for children are kind of tucked away, and, you know, they, they seem, they seem to be working okay there. So I think, you know, we, you know, feel good about this. I mean, they feel, you know, they're comfortable with the location and being able to monitor it.
Are there any further questions from my colleagues regarding any of the business items?
Let me just, if there are no more questions, let me just reemphasize how important it is that this board is taking this phased approach to understanding our facilities. And I think the decision to work through this sequentially, we've had a number of firms working with us, we'll continue to have PNB.
PBDW.
PBDW working from a very much creative and innovative standpoint. LAN has already proven remarkably thorough. That was a competitive bid, they competed with a lot of firms, I think they've proven just in the Washington wing ceiling thing, how thorough they are, both Maureen, but then I, with her out, I was stepping in to try and play Maureen a little bit, so that's how I was frontline with Joe on that ceiling situation. But Joe has said he hasn't seen a firm here that's that thorough with a number of engineers and others around. And when they discovered these two ceilings, they thoroughly checked everything else. That's not concrete, it's drywall, so that's much more standard, and we sort of pieced together how this may have existed. But districts are only smart when they do this thorough attention to facilities. And it's, it's a wonderful old building, but it's an old building, and we, we have to be extra careful with it. As you on your walkabout today heard, fresh eyes here of comment on how incredibly clean and neat the building is and well taken care of. At the same time, we are long overdue for some serious, very thoughtfully, well-analyzed investment, which we, we're going to gradually be bringing more and more of that to you. But I feel very assured with LAN as our partner on this, and you now have a very detailed outline of their timeline, what they're looking at, the specifics. I feel very confident that we're in good hands to help us understand what the best foot forward step forward is on any number of things.
Yeah.
I just, you know, for the community listening, rest assured, you're in a very good place right now with the commitment of this board to be thorough and cautious. That's what I'll be doing with Maureen and Joe, and now with LAN as a partner. I, I think we've really got good expert third party, very honest, rigorous, thorough people to help us. I really wanted to underscore that whole point.
Dodge, I hate to put it this way, but we dodged.
Absolutely.
It wasn't foreseeable, right? I mean, it was, it was above the ceiling, so it wasn't necessarily predictable.
Yeah, to visualize it, you have drop ceilings everywhere. There was a slight sag in it, but nothing that the untrained eye wouldn't necessarily think was any different. But they were very quick to say, something's not quite right there. And when they opened it up, and then I, I saw it, you had, above that drop ceiling, you had thick layer, a thick layer of concrete, and your concrete, as you know, has internal iron meshing. And then you had a series of plumbing lines that were holding all that up.
And electrical lines too.
Yeah, electrical lines, gas lines all through it, is, is natural above sort of that, and, so as we looked at it, and it was, and complement to the core team that's here, they were ready to get up there and take it down. And I actually had to lean in, Joe said, no, no, they're so devoted and dedicated, and very good. You saw today on your walkthrough, brand new spaces that our own people have built, that we're not jobbing that out. But I had to say to a couple of them, I put my old coach's hat on, I want you in the later game. I'm concerned if you try and do this, I'm going to lose you for the later games. So they, but when they brought this, this was assuring to me, Joe, you raised, because I was deeply troubled when I saw this. And we talked earlier about how open about this Sylvia. But one thing I heard today from Joe, when they actually went to take all that out, because we did bring in contractors to do that, it took them a lot to get out there, so why, get it out. So while it looked risky, it was still very much solidly there, but it had to come out. And so it's now out, and then our people put it all back together. So in the space of two weeks, we discovered this, dealt with it, and then... So in the space of two weeks, we discovered this, dealt with it, and then you've walked the building, you see how clean it is now. We had already cleaned two floors up, well, that all had dust from the job to get it out, so it's had to get all re-cleaned. So a lot of work to have, not just the whole building ready, but these two classrooms ready. And I go on at a little bit of length here, because I think the details helps you as a board, and helps those you, you know, helps the community understand.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then the last thing with the bond bill, I mean, we will be, again, re-engaging in September. My assistant's going to work to schedule a facilities meeting. I think we had considered, or had hoped to do some facilities meetings over the summer, but really letting land dig in, and really get the thorough analysis, I think, you know, we said, let's wait to get, you know, instead of just having meetings and not having more information to share. So I think we're in a good space now that we want to, you know, pick up that schedule, starting in a few weeks.
Is there anything further from any of my colleagues? Any more questions? No? All right, then. Is there a motion to approve business items 1 through 21 in section 7A of our agenda? Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving along to the placement and services for CSC and CPSC, is there a motion to approve the classification, and accepted classifications and arrangements for the placement and/or services as contained in section 7B? Do you have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the personnel and consent at agenda portion of our meeting, is there a motion to approve agenda items 8B through 8E as contained in the consent agenda for this meeting? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye. Aye. Moving on to the minutes portion of our agenda, did you have any question? Did you have a question?
Do you see D and E?
Yeah, I said it as 8 through E.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I thought you said 8 and B.
No. Moving on to section 9, regarding the approval of minutes in section 9A, do I have any questions regarding the minutes as prepared for the last meeting? Are there any questions? Nope. All right. Do I have a motion then to approve agenda item 9A?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to the new business portion, BOE meeting topics, finalizing the draft for the upcoming school year. Dr. McCursley.
All right, this, this is a structure we've used now for several years, it's highly flexible. So that's where you're, it's a draft, it's a working document, but it does allow you as a board to look ahead to every single meeting, and sort of look at what, what's on the agenda, and where there may be room for you to sort of say, I've got a particular interest, particular issue, I'd like to make sure the board, you know, and you as an official board member, you'd work with the full board, and is this a topic we're going to dig into? But it gives you a sense of where the time is, the space is, gives you a sense of, you know, when, when in the year there are, it's a heavier time, read budget season, you know, and other times. But it also lets us in each meeting, be very immediate, look to the next meeting. One change we did make is, we have moved to, not next meeting, but the 24th of the state of the district update from last year. We are still awaiting some New York State data, grade 3 through 8. We are hoping we'll have it by the 24th. If we don't, we'll still at that point present, but if we can, you know, bring it to you with that, that'll be helpful. We also wanted to do a little more thorough work on some of the panorama data that is to be in there, that's social, emotional look. And summer was still busy for people, so we didn't, you know, really get to that thoroughly as we want. And it's now an annual report, and going into, in the future years, if the state will be on the kind of turnaround they are now, we may draft the positions for the fall, and witness your new assistant principal at the middle school, witness Andy and both Tara at the high school, Scott. You have, you have building leaders who look at that in the right way. They care about that, they look at that, they look at evidence, multiple measures, multiple indicators. You heard that, for example, tonight from Dan, when you met with him privately. But we want to look at evidence, look at that, and not, and I believe strongly, a mature community looks at it in wholesomely, in a whole way, multiple measures, multiple indicators. So that's what we're doing. But we had to delay that report, so it's as thoughtful as possible.
Are we waiting on state test scores?
328 is embargoed right now. We're, we're hoping that we can hold it in. It makes good sense, because we have our local data, but carrying that with the state's idyllic.
So anyway, this is, so you have it, you see, you know, it's here, we'll come, we'll look at it in every meeting, but then you as a board member separately can look at it, speak with Alex and Sylvia, either here separately about, hey, there's, we see some space there, so is there another topic we could begin to address? So.
All right, I'm going to skip over the second public comment, as there's no public present with us. So now it's Board of Education comments, and I actually just want to start out by reiterating or speaking to, to the fact that we did get to participate in a walkthrough of the Hillside campus and the FMS complex. And I think it's, you know, always very insightful to be led through, and I give thanks to our Director of Facilities, Joe Martorana, for giving us a dizine, in-depth look at subflooring, single pane windows, and the multitude of things that it takes for, to really offer the facilities that best serve our students. It takes a lot of work for, for those of us who think that school is not in session, when in fact, it's always a hive of activity. And it's a real testament, I think, to the staff that we have on the ground, and who are on the premises year round, you know, harkening back even to when we had a pipe explosion a couple of years back on Christmas Day, and there were people here who were, who kept our premises from being flooded. So I think that we owe a great debt of appreciation to those people who have really made our, all of our campuses feel very spick and span, top notch, and do absolutely the most that they can with what they have available to them. And in no way does that undermine the fact that we really owe it to our student population, to the people who populate this building for the bulk of the year, to offer them the best. And there's always room for improvement. I really appreciate that. You all took the time. I do consider it a privilege to be able to see it and to watch, because we don't get to do that on day in and day out basis, even if you're a parent. So I just wanted to take the time to say, like, thank you for preparing the facilities, the grounds. It takes a lot of work to welcome back our students, and to welcome back our teachers and staff. We'll be here in the building tomorrow. So that's terrific.
I'm going to piggyback on that, because I apologize that I wasn't able to be here for the walkthrough, but just walking into the building, it's just always overwhelming at the beginning of the school year to feel all the work that has been done, and the pride, I think that the people in the go-to-old department all take in it. And it's just, it's really very special. And we really want to thank Joe and everyone with him for all that they do. And on another note, I was just thinking, I was at a wedding this past weekend of someone from Hastings. When would they have graduated? 2005, I guess. And there were a number of people from Hastings, they're like classmates, and the family actually has kids in many different, had kids in many different grades, so there were like, a lot of different Hastings young people there. And so many of them came up to me, and we were just in conversation, and talked about how much they loved going to school in Hastings, and what an incredible experience it was for them, and how much they realized, even when they went to college, and talking to people that, and now that they've all gone, many of them living, of course, in Brooklyn. But, you know, just the fondness and the warm feelings, and it just was really, it was heartwarming, you know, just wonderful. So, thank you.
Nice.
Yeah, I'll add my thanks to the, to Joe and his crew for making the place look excellent, and working, you know, on a tight budget. It doesn't, it doesn't mean we don't need bigger projects, right? So don't let it fool you, just because it looks so nice. I think, you know, they, they really do their best with what they have. I also wanted to welcome our new colleagues. I think this is our first meeting with Catherine and David, so welcome officially, and to all the new staff, and wish everyone a good school year.
I'd like to say something about the walkthrough. I absolut, I, I am really impressed by the state of, the upkeep of the facility. It's, it is, it's just very impressive. And that being said, I feel like this walkthrough really highlighted for us that there are significant upgrades that need to happen at the middle school. We are overcrowded, we could see it, and there weren't even students in the room. It's tight, and it shouldn't be so, like, necessarily uncomfortable for the students. And, and so I think it's, it just, the visual of doing a walkthrough, and then hearing the architect's report, really make me, as much as community members, and I don't want to see my taxes go up and a bond be passed, it really feels essential to upgrade that, the facility. And I hope that, you know, it's a smooth ride to getting money to do so.
I think I would like to echo what you just spoke about, and not having any children that have gone through the system yet. Looking at, investing in the long-term growth of the district is important, and going through the walkthrough, although the facility is sparkling clean, there are areas that you can see that do need updates. And I would also like to thank Sylvia for stepping in as president today.
Yes. Oh, my gosh. You're going to make me. So anybody else, does anybody else have any comments they'd like to share? No? All right. I'm just going to notify the public that although we're going to be adjourning, I'm going to make a motion for that, we won't be returning to the public session after that. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn our regular meeting and move into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, one, and early retirement, and the superintendent's contract? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 So, technical question, do you?